Okay, going into our work session briefing session, first thing on our agenda is discuss the agenda items. City manager.
Oh, yes, who's here today? Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have three items on our consent agenda. Our first item is the consideration of minutes from February 28th, 2022 in our joint meeting, and the March 1st, 2022 city council regular meeting. Second is item 4B, consider resolution awarding three-year term contract for mowing of parks, medians, facility grounds, lots, and right-of-ways to Brightview Landscape Service located in Dallas, Texas as the primary service provider with an estimated amount of $1,479,174, and to Good Earth Corporation located in Dallas, Texas as a secondary service provider with an estimated amount of $1,973,882 based on the unit price.
Question.
Yes, please.
Reading through the documentation on that, I understand what the secondary service provider is, which is in case of default by the first, but it did not name the second.
Okay.
Anybody?
It's Good Earth.
Who did?
Good Earth.
So good.
And so Good Earth.
Brightview is the first.
So it says, "Council has awarded a three-year contract, complete land sculpture, and Good Earth Corporation's mowing parks."
Got it, Taylor. Thank you. I was Mr. Okay, I was reading a little too fast. I was looking at the whole bid process. I shouldn't have done that. I shouldn't have said that.
It's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Is there an opportunity, so we know we had one, one backup, and all these pretty large companies or organizations? Is there anything local at all that we can look at on the, we signed a three-year contract. Anything local we can look at in the future?
Oh, ask Mr. Taylor to respond.
Any local vendors, any local vendors?
We did not get any local vendor for this. We actually put it out and we reached out to the minorities, but we didn't get any response.
But minority, but local as well? How do you reach out to the locals?
Actually, we do put it out to publicpurchase.com. And on this list, we have minorities that have registered indicated that they're satisfied. So those ones were contacted, but we didn't get any response back from any of them.
Mr. Coop, I didn't finish reading. He just told me that I stopped too soon.
I stopped too.
No, no, it has a whole list of information I'm supposed to provide you on this, if you don't, and I'll, it may help with this. It says, "November 2021, complete land sculpture informed staff that they did not want to execute the first or of two one-year renewal auctions, causing the contract to expire on January 31st, 2022. New bid specifications were prepared by staff and bids were released on December 22nd, 2021. Bids were sent to 48 vendors through public purchase and 35 vendors accessed the bid document. Only four attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting on January 11th, 2022, and only three bid requests were received prior to the bid closing date at 2:00 PM on February 1st. The three bids received were from Brightview Landscape Service in Dallas, Good Earth Corporation in Dallas, and Yellowstone Landscape in Dallas. The resolution before you tonight awards a three-year contract to the lowest bidder, which is Brightview Landscape Service for mowing of parks, medians, grounds, lots, and right-of-ways, and primary products." So what I think we were saying in this process, the award is the secondary service provider is solely for the purpose of ensuring that services are rendered as needed if the primary provider fails to deliver per specifications. Your question is, how do we start to reach out and start to entice or get individuals to participate in this process? And Timothy is here, who's been doing this with the city for a while.
So we, the last bid in 2018, we split it up into different sections, and as well, that was featured in this bid as well. We did have a DeSoto company that came to the pre-bid, but they did not submit a bid though.
Okay, okay. There's one also in Cedar Hill. Did they reject, did they?
They did not. Well, I'm not sure if they were one of the ones that responded on, out of the 35, but they certainly didn't come to the, yeah.
Emerald Coops, I think.
Right, yeah, no. We never heard from them. That I know of, I don't know if they were on the list for the opening.
What's the name of the company?
Emerald.
Emerald Carol. I can check on it. I have the.
Coton Porson used to use them, but I don't think they're, when you look at the equipment list that you need on this contract, there's not very many people. Their selection is not very high.
And we do say in these specifications, you don't have to bid on all of it. You don't have to be able to do all of it, because you'd be doing sections of it. But it's up to them to pick that section, I guess, perhaps.
All right, thank you.
One other question, if Mr. Hamilton, if I may. As part of the specification that I read was some mowing along I-20. So what portion of that is the city's responsibility and what portion of that is TechStop's?
So it is all TechStop property, so it is quote-unquote their responsibility. Back many years ago, we took over, did an LMA with them, landscape maintenance agreement with them, to take over management of I-20 if they would double up on Highway 67.
Okay.
But they didn't hold up their bargain. I'm just going to be very honest and blunt. So now that Highway 67 has been redone, I have contacted them, and per like is happening in DeSoto, Cedar Hill, et cetera, we are requesting reimbursement to what they would normally spend, the number of cycles, for both of those, now that we are planning on taking over both. So no longer is it an arrangement where we'll take care of I-20 if you'll double up on 67. It's we're going to take care of both, reimburse us for what you would have done. So we're trying to get that executed.
Yeah, there was a little, it wasn't surprising, it was interesting to note that there was I-20 work on the contract. And I always thought, shame on me. I always assumed I-20 was a TechStop responsibility. So it was an education seeing that in there for me.
Several cities find that TechStop does not maintain it to the level that they would prefer to see.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And, yes, I'm sorry.
Where the, it says the landscape bed maintenance is included in some locations.
That is going to be on our highways, is what our plan is on I-20 and 67 due to the safety concerns with that, with our own staff being out there. They will have all the appropriate materials to make sure that they're doing it safe. But they're also huge beds, and we would have to hire more staff if that was the choice for us to maintain it. So it's more cost-effective to contract that out.
Could you elaborate on that? When we, when we get to do the beautiful landscaping along the interstates, our responsibility when we accept the grants and the ability, would you explain that?
Certainly, certainly. We sign a landscape maintenance agreement with them. So I-20 has received probably in the neighborhood of $400,000 between Green Ribbon and GCAA winnings from 2008. We just won again last year, so there's going to be some additional beds done. I'm going to be probably in April coming to you all with a couple of ideas of where possibly for you all to choose, where you might want to see that beautification. And then there's already a program going on on Highway 67, a Green Ribbon program, where we were awarded money. So, and those monument signs that you probably are starting to see some evidence of, it's going to really make that gateway pop on Highway 67.
Well, we're required to maintain those as part of our agreement, and so it's important that we know that. It's beautiful. It may be on TechStop, but once you do any changes to it, it becomes your responsibility to maintain, and that's what we contract out.
And there was a budget adjustment between last year to this year, realizing that we were going to be having that come on board.
Yes, I'm thinking about the entryways, like Cedar Ridge and I-20 and then Cockro Hill and 67, you know, we've got the signs and.
Do you mean like in the middle of Cedar Ridge?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we do have, we do have beds at Cedar Ridge and at Cockro Hill as well.
Waitland and Cockro Hill.
And we went to Cockro Hill. We do pretty much at most of our entryways. So what I have asked TechStop to prepare for us is some renderings to give you all a, you know, 50,000-foot view of what it would be like to possibly do at Cedar Ridge and I-20, since that's an entry into the city. And then more on Main Street, the Main Street exit all the way to Main, and then also coming from southbound as you get past Daniel Dale approaching as well. So those were a couple of options there.
Thank you.
What did you ask about it? Done in-house. Those are maintained in-house. What did you want to ask?
That's not included.
That's not included.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's what you were asking.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's good.
Okay.
All right, and the final item that was there, I've actually asked for this item to be pulled as I needed to make sure that I've actually met with the candidate and reviewed this process. And so we're asking that the consent item C be pulled from the agenda for this.
Agreed, okay, very good. Moving on to item number two, briefings and presentations. Question. On item for individual consideration, 5A, is the briefing we're getting for 2A redundant with 5A?
Yes, sir. We wanted to brief in here just to make sure that we had a chance to discuss it. And then we've actually prepared a first-level ordinance, and then attorney has a recommendation of codifying it farther. But, so we wanted to do a briefing now.
Okay.
Just to give you a quick overview of what we're going to present, in case time was of issue.
Okay, very good. All right. Then, going to, where did I go? There it is, item 2A. Mr. Segal.
Good evening, everyone. I need to click right. Okay. So this is an ordinance before you for consideration and approval to establish a reasonable response commuting range requirement during civil emergencies for certain positions. So this would be like if it was a declared emergency or another winter storm. Certain employees that we need to be able to be on-site in a quick manner in order to respond to the emergency would have a shorter travel distance because there would be such a requirement that they had to live closer to the city.
Question.
Yes, sir.
So the declaration of a civil emergency can sometimes come from the governor, can sometimes come from the county judge, and can sometimes come from me locally. So during, what was it, storm landed, we gave this consideration in terms of the actual declaration of an emergency. And we saw it come from the judge, but there was a decision that, because we're covered by what the judge does, is it necessary then for the municipality itself to go ahead and issue a declaration? Decision was negative. So we went under the auspices of the civil, of the declaration issued by the county judge.
Okay.
So looking at the ordinance, is it necessary, Mr. City Attorney, to state that in essence or any? Because what Todd just said, he used the word declared. This doesn't have the word declared. I'm not sure it was, it was in the ordinance as declared as well. If it was, maybe I missed it. Because this only really applies during a declared civil emergency.
This is defined individuals who will have a requirement to live within a certain distance of the city at any point in time because they are always required during a, during an emergency.
Okay.
So this is a permanent requirement for any new hires that are hired that would require them to reside within a certain response time of the city and based on their necessity. So the state passed a law, which is, he's going to talk about, that allows Texas local government calls that employees who are likely to be called to work during a civil emergency, they must reside within a reasonable response time to their workplace.
But my question still goes back to the actual declaration.
No, the ordinance, it's a state statutory requirement that allows us to do this. So the only thing that's in your ordinance is whose positions will be affected by that statute. And since it's statutory, they, they use the definition of civil emergency could be declared by the governor, the county judge, or the local municipal.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And so these, these positions are those primarily that would take the leading role in activating the EOC.
Activating the EOC if necessary, even without the EOC, they're the folks who, if everybody else is at home, we're still at work. I am covered under the city charter, so therefore I could be listed as a person. However, I have to reside within the city by charter. The other individuals would have to reside by this ordinance. Otherwise, as he's going to talk about, state code does not allow that.
Everybody stole my thing.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Why make it sound like?
So the next bullet item is what we were talking about of the Texas Local Government Code. Chapter 150.21 specifies that state employees who are likely to be called to work in cases of civil emergency may be required to reside within a reasonable response commuting range of their place of work by ordinance. Pursuant to the same subsection of the Texas Government Code, the established requirement may not be retroactively imposed on any incumbents who are in the positions that were identified. So this would only apply to if a vacancy was in one of those positions and we were recruiting somebody in those positions. In addition, the U.S. Supreme Court and other federal and state courts have held that continuing residency requirements are constitutional. And then one of our best southwest cities has established such an ordinance, and that is Lancaster. So the ordinance points that we're recommending are a 30-minute reasonable response commuting range requirement. The city manager, as was specified, is covered under a residency requirement by the city charter. And the positions that we are suggesting that require the commuting range are the assistant city manager, the public works director, the police chief, the fire chief, and our regency emergency management administrator.
And then a shared, and then last one in the shared, shared position?
Yes, sir.
So that means the other cities are doing the same?
I believe that that is part of the Lancaster ordinance for that position as well.
We have, DeSoto and Cedar Hill, is there a problem?
Correct, it's all four.
Are they doing the same thing?
Well, they, I reached out to my counterparts in the other two cities, and they don't have anything yet that's going before their council, so I'm not sure if that's something that's in the works. But only Lancaster has adopted the ordinance.
And I can say that in speaking to DeSoto and both Cedar Hill, specifically DeSoto, they have a unwritten requirement of residency. They don't do proximity, and so, and for example, they have a new fire chief coming on, and they've given that person a certain amount of time, not by law, but to relocate to the city.
They wanted to reach out and ask for this to, to be placed on it because we had the opportunity at this point. Our citizens, we hear this from our citizens over and over again. So one reason I asked for this to be on the agenda for us to look at it, especially since we're, we're, we're just, we're grandfathering our current team over, which is great. But also it's setting future precedents for others coming on, so that's why I asked for it to be on.
Mr. Kretschner.
A couple slides back, you said that it may be required.
Right, so the, the subchapter in the Texas code says that we do have the right. We may be able to do that. It doesn't mandate that we do it. It says that the cities can do it if they wish to.
We have the option.
Correct.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kretschner. Very good.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. So I got a couple, so where's it measured from? Is it measured from the border? Say, for instance, they live west. Is it measured from the westmost border of the city to their location?
That's a good question, and I was also thinking about, is it land miles or air miles? But it just says their, their location of work, their work location. So if you take into account City Hall as the central point, it would be in 30 minutes from City Hall, which is approximately like a 20-minute drive.
Do Google Maps. If you're at the metro, that much, if you're at the metro, that close, it's easy to move.
And then the second part is that consider weather. So if we know there's going to be a weather generally, we're going to be proactive and move forward rather than wait for the weather to hit, and then, I would think, like previously when we set up the EOC, you know, previous or prior to an event. So people already knew and were on location, so.
Right, but it could also be for any other kind of civil emergency that's not weather-related, but I.
But there's, response time is not weather-related. It's just everyone must reside within 30 minutes. So not saying, well, you know, sometimes there's bad traffic. And so it could take 30 minutes to get from downtown Dallas or from two blocks away, depending on traffic. So it's on a traditional timeframe, how long does it take you, no traffic in mind, to get from your place of residence to City Hall or to whatever place you want.
Have you ever seen Sam Rody drive?
It could be more.
Go and get there.
You know, going back to what Mr. Kretschner, Mr. Kretschner mentioned, this could be an issue for the next regional emergency management coordinator serving all the cities. Where does that individual choose to live? So it would be, I guess, up to our police chief enforcement that individual is, is being interviewed. If Lauren chooses to leave and we're looking for a new emergency management regional coordinator, then this particular ordinance would have to come into play to advise that person, we have an ordinance, you have to live within 30 minutes of the city of Duncanville. And Lancaster would then impose it, but the cities of Cedar Hill and DeSoto don't. So it could complicate where that individual chooses to live, just as kind of a heads up.
Currently, the Duncanville Fire Chief is the one who leads the way on employment. And they have conference with the other three fire chiefs. We all come to an agreement on where this, what the employees would like to have. So at that point, we would go in there and say, okay, you will have to live within this amount of distance.
All right, it's an imposition placed on that person by two cities, but it's an option of the other two. But it should be, it will be the decision of the four fire chiefs. Right, okay, yes, sir. Back for that.
So, yeah, and along that same line, is it, is it measured from the, where the southwest region was located?
The dispatch center?
Where does she work?
Which EOC?
She, she would come and respond to our Duncanville EOC. That's her first response. And then if we want to delve her out to one of the other three cities, she can travel from one of the other three cities to assist.
Okay, so the application of this ordinance would apply only to the Duncanville EOC.
Correct.
Got one more thing. It's more of a statement than anything, but whenever there's an incident, whoever's on scene first, whether it's police or fire, someone takes command of that until they're relieved by using equal or greater.
Authority.
Authority. So resources are requested, things are happening, you know, it's, it's not static, it's moving. And so whenever the, whoever's police chief, fire chief, whoever gets there generally, they're not going to take over the scene. They're just going to kind of manage the overall thing and work with the city manager on the whole deal, so. That's just my two cents on that.
Very good. So I guess for us on city council, this briefing is going to be reiterated in open city council session. Any other questions need to be addressed while we're here versus being handled out there? Shouldn't be a very short item out there, though.
So you, you're the one who's questioning this. Could you remind us again, why you question this?
Well, the normal citizens have been, we've been talking about it for a while. Citizens have been bringing it up to before a while. And so with the, with the, our new chief and other positions changing, this is a great opportunity to transition into a new policy.
Was it, the concern was the response time? Is that like a primary concern?
Yes. In addition, we, we didn't have it in writing before, but it was always kind of pre-stated before. Is that?
I can respond.
We didn't have it in writing before, but we did, it was just something that the city manager at that point was making a rule, but it was not, nothing in writing.
Councilmember, during my interview process and subsequent meetings with 101 and councilmembers, one of the issues that was brought up was residency and promoting residency of people residing within the city of Duncanville. And so I was very aware, and as you mentioned, state law, and we didn't say it in here, it actually prevents residency requirements for anyone not appointed directly by the council. And so therefore, I, or if the city attorney was an employee, or the only, or judge, are the only people you can require to live in the city. However, it's been an issue and something that was brought up, and in some cities, I always say the city of Chicago has 100% residency department. You cannot work for the city of Chicago and not live in Chicago. In some cities, it's only appointees that are required for residency. Some city managers in the past have had inactive policies. For example, when our previous police chief was hired, he was told, I'm hiring you, but I need you to move to the city, and which, that's how he ended up initially buying a house in the city. But we cannot require anyone to live in Duncanville. The only thing we can require, which is newly added, is a caveat based on the complaint of citizens, or cities, is that we can require those who are considered essential in this civil emergency type to have at least to, a requirement to live within a certain range or distance of the city. We saw, you know, it, we've, we've managed, and I can tell you, our team, and whether they live here or not, have done a great job of being on-site and making arrangements to be there. But the catch is, so what happens when the tornado happens? And no one knows that it's coming, unlike an ice storm that we're able to plan for. How quickly can people respond to the scene? And so that's why cities have done this. And residents, you know, residents in some cases hope. We recognize also that the cost of housing may prohibit, or rental places availability may even prohibit people from living directly in the city, but within a certain radius of the city is the push that I've, I've heard even.
Anything else?
Mayor, I think possibly consider, based on what we've heard, is it move that to consent agenda as well?
Well, the, the purpose of it being here and moving out there was for the education and being passed on to our citizens in open council meeting.
Right.
So I would, I kind of suggest, you know, we've heard it, it's going to be short, but the information will be presented in an open city council meeting as well. I understand what you're saying though, Mr. McNamara. Okay, all right, with that, that concludes our work session briefing session. So we will recess this at? 6:26.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are glad to be underway. Timestamp on opening our city council meeting on March 15th of 2022, timestamp is 7:07. Thank you very much for being here. In accordance with the order of the Office of the Governor issued March 16th of 2020, as extended, the city council for the city of Duncanville, Texas, will conduct city council regular meetings in person and by video conference at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, which we had a briefing session starting on March 15th in order to advance the public health goal of limiting face-to-face meetings in an effort to slow the spread of the coronavirus. This is an open meeting conducted in person and by video conference. Due to limited seating in council chambers, persons or persons participating may attend by video in order to maintain social distancing as provided in this notice. Pursuant to city practice, citizen comments and reports during election season, March 1st through May 7th, and during a runoff election period are not broadcast or recorded, Zoom will be for streaming only. The next item on our agenda for tonight is the invocation, and council member, Mayor Pro Tim, Patrick Harvey, will give the invocation. Please rise.
Dear God, our heavenly Father, your name is worthy to be praised from the rising of the sun to the going down of the same. We are thankful that you have made us and not we ourselves. We're thankful that you made us in your image and your likeness. We're thankful that you have given us a plan and a purpose. And even though we from time to time fall short of your desires, we're thankful that you have given us a way of forgiveness. And you ask that we would forgive one another as you forgive us. We're thankful, dear God, to live in this wonderful community where we can enjoy freedom and liberty, but we are reminded that in another part of the world, people are putting their lives on the line, fighting against tyranny and aggression. And so we pray that you would give us a heart and a mindset to stand with people of goodwill all over this world on behalf of the people of the Ukraine. And we pray that you would intervene and intercede on their behalf. We're thankful, dear God, particularly that you have blessed us with the opportunity to serve this community. And so we yield to you that you would lead us and guide us, that you would enable us to accomplish your heart's desire on behalf of this wonderful community. And we pray that you would guide us to do everything decently and in order. With this, we ask in Jesus' name. For this, we ask in Jesus' name and for his sake, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in pledges to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Thank you. Please be seated. As you may have come to understand and recognize that one of the programs that initiated was recognizing champions of the city. And I've also mentioned quite frequently that while we do have a great athletic department at Duncanville High School, it's their, it's their three-peat, right? Three in a row, if I read the information correctly. Champions exist in arts, education, media, theater, business, and in service. And the individuals that I want to recognize tonight as champions, champions, plural, of the city, you've seen them around a lot, probably didn't recognize them. But everywhere they go, they seem to be very memorable because they wear the citizens on patrol, what shall I call it, regalia or uniform. So, recognizing tonight as champions of the city, David and Nellie Porterfield. David? I'm going to preface this with, have you seen this guy around a lot? You see him at our parades, you see him at July fourth, everywhere that we have something going on, you see David. You may see Nellie with him at the same time. She doesn't, well, I'm going to read some data, and she's an enormous volunteer. He has a little bit of edge on her in terms of the hours. But Nellie happens to be out of state on business right now. But David said he would agree to come and represent her. And their daughter is here tonight, so we're thankful that she was able to come. So, David, what I would like to read is this proclamation I made for you and Nellie. Champions of the city, David and Nellie Porterfield. David and Nellie Porterfield attended the nineteen ninety-four Citizen Police Academy to become members of Duncanville Citizens on Patrol, better known as cops. At the time, they were in their thirty-seventh year of marriage. This year, they celebrate sixty-seven years of joyful matrimony. David and Nellie are distinguished and highly visible persons, seen on duty for our parades and whenever special events are held in the city. Both David and Nellie readily volunteer whenever called upon. David has a total of three thousand six hundred seven cop hours and eight hundred fifty-eight volunteer hours. He regularly assists the police department with fingerprinting and photography. Nellie has a total of two thousand one hundred thirty-one cop hours and one hundred and fifty-eight volunteer hours. Combined, they have five thousand seven hundred thirty-eight cop hours on duty, which equates to seven hundred seventeen days or right at two years. Now, I'm a numbers guy, so I just had to do that. Their combined hours total, one thousand, I'm saying, back to where I am. Their combined volunteer hours total one thousand sixteen. Putting their total time together, serving Duncanville, they have six thousand seven hundred fifty-four hours or roughly three point three years. They are model citizens and superb examples of how we may stay involved and serve our city. David and Nellie Porterfield are hereby recognized as champions of the city. As mayor of the city of Duncanville, I ask our residents to join me in congratulating the Porterfields on this memorable occasion. David and Nellie in absentia, congratulations.
It's been a real privilege living in Duncanville. We moved from the west part of Dallas to Duncanville because my wife was selling real estate out here at that time. And it's been a city that, kind of the type that you would look for is being ideal. We have the privilege of driving almost all the streets within Duncanville. So, you get a very good idea of what the city is. And it's a place that is enjoyable, a place that people like one another, a place that has built relationships. And from the leadership, a great deal of ability to function is both as a neighbor and as a responsible citizen. And the many hours, and I don't really consider that much effort, that we've driven, worked, lived around here, we've always felt like this was a place that you would like to call home. It's a place where everybody is welcome, everybody is treated nicely with love and respect. And when I look at the numbers, one of the better communities in Dallas County as far as crime, as far as ability to work with the people that need assistance, and as the ability to build relationships which are important to a community. Been very proud to be in Duncanville. And as we look for the next few years, we hope that we're able to stay here and enjoy the relationships and the fellowship, the companionship, quite frankly, that we find in what to me is the ideal community in the United States. Thank you so much for your love, your reaching out, and your sharing with the people around about you.
Thank you, David. So, boy. Somebody else, go away. There's somebody else who'd like to say a few words. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Porterfield, I would just like to say that for the longest time, you've been a fixture in our department and our city, and it is greatly appreciated. You and your wife, Nellie, are the epitome of selfless service. Thank you.
Let's get a picture with all three of them. And also, David, for your home office desk, I'm sure you probably have one, is a medallion from the city of Duncanville. Let's get a picture.
Next item on the agenda is the recognition of Officer Doug Sisk. And I have a proclamation I would like to read. Today, we honor Doug Sisk for more than thirty-five years of dedicated service to the city of Duncanville. And whereas, in Doug's illustrious career with the city, he has served in many different capacities, including patrol officer, SWAT operator, canine handler, public information officer, and crime prevention officer. And whereas, in Doug's capacity of canine handler, he and partners Pedro and Azzi were directly responsible for removing addictive and harmful drugs and narcotics from the schools and streets of the city while seizing hundreds of thousands of dollars as the proceeds of such illegal activity. And whereas, Doug has been a valuable champion of the city of Duncanville and Texas Special Olympics, and through the coordination of the largest fire truck pull in Texas, Doug's efforts have raised hundreds of thousands of dollars for such a wonderful cause, while providing an ever-positive attitude and compassion for Texas's most special athletes. And whereas, Doug's dedication to leading the Duncanville Police Department Santa Cop efforts for over a decade allowed for many less fortunate children and families to receive a joyful Christmas. And whereas, Doug's thirty-five years of service to the city makes him the longest-tenured police employee to date who has ever worked continuously for the Duncanville Police Department. And whereas, as much-loved and respected city family member, Doug will be dearly missed. Therefore, I, Barry Gordon, mayor of the city of Duncanville, do hereby proclaim March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two as Doug Sisk Day. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. It's been an honor to serve the city, and that's pretty much it, or I'll be bawling all over the place.
It might be two of us, Doug.
Yes, sir, I'm up here too much tonight, but any time for this fellow as well. You know, I tried to talk Doug out of leaving. I don't think he's having it, and he deserves the time to go and enjoy his retirement. And we're going to miss Doug Sisk.
This time, we have something to do specially for some of our first responders as well. I'll introduce Chief Sam Rhodey, chief of our fire department. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're here to honor a family member of the Duncanville Fire Department. Been with us for twenty-seven years. Mike's gone through all the positions in the Duncanville Fire Department, from a firefighter, paramedic, engineer, captain, all the way up to division chief. When Mike went into that position, he excelled. He brought the Duncanville Fire Department EMS to a whole different level. And you can see by all those red patches on those guys' arms back there, you can assure that Mike had something to do with making sure those guys are the most proficient group of EMS in the south side of Dallas, including all the Lancaster and all that bunch around there. He's really made sure that our guys know what they're doing. He's instrumental in the state. He made sure that he was involved with the RAC. He is involved with our medical control and BITEL, making sure that they had a little, what Mike always liked to call the common sense approach. And everybody in the fire department would agree, Mike's got that common sense approach. He's all, well, like, I don't know anybody in the fire department or anybody around that doesn't like Chief Ryan. So, Chief Ryan's going to really be missed. I mean, he's a wealth of information and good common sense for the Duncanville Fire Department. So, he's really going to be missed. He's gone on to be the fire chief in Corsica, which makes me and all of our administration awful proud for the fact that we've had two of our firefighters that are now fire chiefs. We have Cade Long, who's down in Shirts, and now we have Mike Ryan down in Corsica. But it tells a lot about the dedication and the teamwork that we go through and the support from the council to make sure that our guys are top knowledge educated and they're, you have good professional development so they can move on to be chiefs in these other cities. So, it makes me real proud, and it should make the citizens of Duncanville real proud. And our city council should be real proud that you have people that are that qualified that can go be a fire chief in another city. So, Mike, we're going to miss you, buddy. I know I am, because me and Mike used to always cut up. Whenever I need an EMS question resolved, Mike was there, and he knew the answer. If he didn't, he found the answer. So, he kept me going down the right path when it came down to EMS. So, as y'all are all well aware, we had a retirement party for Mike on Thursday. Of course, I couldn't be there. I was on one of my several cruises I go on, so. I got, missed the chance to present him with a plaque. So, if you guys will entertain me on this, I'd like to present Mike with his plaque that he received the other night. And his plaque says, "To the Duncanville Fire Department, twenty-seven years of service, Mike Ryan, nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and twenty-two. In appreciation and recognition for your many contributions to the department, your fellow firefighters, and your community." Mike, I'd like to present that plaque to you again.
I'm just going to interrupt because Chief Rhodey wasn't there. As he said, he was on another cruise the other night. But I had an opportunity to make one quick comment about this guy. And while Chief can stand up here and say his opinion on how well our E M Ts are and how well Mike has done, I received factual statistical information from the liaison of Methodist Charlton Hospital one day, Dudley. I don't remember his last, but first. Dudley Wilcox. We were chatting one day, and he said, "I just want to let you know that of all the E M T services that come into Methodist Charlton, the Duncanville crew is the best-trained and the best people that serve Methodist Charlton, and that's a testament to you, Mike." Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a tradition in the fire service. You know, there's all kinds of little gifts that we gave Mike the other night, and some away from the party for a good reason. But there's another tradition that we always do in the fire department in, that is, we present the helmet that represents their position. Mike being the EMS division chief, he would wear a white helmet. And then each one of our members in the fire department sign congratulations for his retirement. So, Mike, we'd like to present this helmet. It means a lot. A lot of times, you think of them, they're just dust collectors. But twenty years from now, when it's sitting on your wall, and you look up there, you'll have all the memories of all the guys you worked with who signed this and who you taught. So, Mike, I'd like you to present you with this helmet. Mayor, I'd also like to congratulate Corsica for giving one of my best men. But I also want to recognize our frontline guys who are here tonight. They have a lot of things they need to be doing. They came tonight to honor Mike for being on his new trip down, his journey of the fire chief of Corsica. That being said, Mayor, I'll give you back to you.
Mr. Contreras. Chief Rhodey?
This is a proclamation recognizing March twenty through twenty-six of two thousand and twenty-two as Poison Prevention Week. And reading it is council member Contreras, receiving it, Chief Sam Rhodey.
Whereas, our society has become increasingly dependent on household chemicals to perform labor-saving, time-saving miracles, and on medicine to provide health-giving, life-sustaining benefits. And whereas, these products were not used as intended or directed, may be hazardous, particularly if children gain access to them. And whereas, over the past sixty years, the nation has been observing Poison Prevention Week to call attention to these hazards and how proper handling and disposal of these substances and proper use of safety packaging can help eliminate them. And whereas, the efforts of our community organizations complemented by the efforts of the North Texas Poison Center have reduced childhood poisonings in Duncanville, Texas. And whereas, the North Texas Poison Center, a regional poison center located at Parkland Health and Hospital System, provide the ultimate in human service programming and immediate accessible emergency information to save lives of victims of poison-related emergencies. And whereas, these programs should continue as long as even one child swallows a household product or medicine by mistake. Now, therefore, Barry Gordon, mayor of the city of Duncanville, hereby proclaims March twentieth to twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two as Poison Prevention Week in the city of Duncanville. Further, he directs the appropriate agencies in our local government to continue their cooperation with concerned citizens and community organizations, including our schools, to develop programs which will alert people to the continued danger of misusing medicines and household products and to promote effective safeguards against accidental poisoning amongst young children. Chief?
Thank you, Councilman Contreras. Just a few things I'd like to say. Generally, Mike Ryan would have accepted this tonight, but since he's bailed on us, I guess I'm gonna be the recipient of this, but we'll take good care of it. But, you know, a lot of people think about poisoning, I've used that program down there at BITEL many, many, many times over my career, but we always sit there and we think about children, being the only ones that you need to call about that. But nowadays, there's all kinds of substance abuse and people that attempt to take their lives, that there's a real need for the Poison Center down there to get advice, both for us and through the public if they can get it through. So this is really an important program that Parkland puts on down there, so we really appreciate it of it. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three on the agenda, citizens' input. I will note, once again, comments during citizens' input are not broadcast, so City Secretary, please advise when we are ready to go.
February 28, 2022 joint meeting and the March 1st, 2022 city council regular meeting. Item 4B, consider a resolution awarding a three-year term contract for mowing of parks, mediums, facility grounds, lots, and rideaways to Brightview Landscape Services located in Dallas, Texas as the primary service provider with an estimated amount of $1,479,174 and to Good Earth Corporation located in Dallas, Texas as the secondary service provider with an estimated amount of $1,973,082 based on the unit price bid. Item 4C was removed.
Thank you. Chair, entertain a motion to approve the considered items.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cook, second by Mr. McNabbernet. Council, please vote. Thank you, unanimous, it's approved. Moving on to item 5A, consider an ordinance establishing a 30-minute reasonable response time per ends commuting range requirement for civil emergencies for identified positions. Presenting this as item is our HR Director, Mr. Todd Segal.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is an ordinance to approve establishing a reasonable response commuting range requirement during civil emergencies for certain positions. Chapter 150.021 of the Texas Local Government Code states employees who are likely to be called to work in cases of civil emergency may be required to reside within a reasonable response commuting range of their place of work by ordinance. Pursuant to subsection 150.021, the Texas Government Code, the established requirement may not be retroactively imposed on any incumbent or any person in the employ of the municipality at the time the standards are adopted. So this would not affect any of the incumbents in the positions that we will speak of. The U.S. Supreme Court and other federal and state courts have held that continuing residency requirements are constitutional. Lancaster, which is one of our other best southwest cities, has established such an ordinance. So the summary of the ordinance points are to establish a 30-minute reasonable response commuting range requirement. The city manager, as we know, is covered with a residency requirement by city charter. The positions that we are listing to require the commuting range are the Assistant City Manager, the Public Works Director, the Police Chief, the Fire Chief, and the Regional Emergency Management Administrator. Any questions?
Any questions by council? First I see is Mr. Vera Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, in the briefing, I asked these questions, and the first one was, where would it be measured from? Would it be measured from City Hall and/or the border?
Yes. Councilman, it'll be measured from City Hall.
City Hall. And secondly, I think it was more of a statement than anything, but, but once there's an emergency call and the first officer and/or firefighter makes it on scene, they take command of the incident. And so therefore, it's maintained, and at that particular time, they start requesting resources, anything else that they need. So the arrival of that Assistant Chief or the ones named there in the briefing, the command is not necessarily gonna be transferred to them. They're there to more supervise and then gain other resources. So that's just more information than anything. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Segal, will you reiterate for me that an approval of this tonight will take place upon the staff that occupies the positions after the people that are currently there leave?
That is correct. So, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So will not be, the incumbents in the five positions will not be impacted. Should those positions become vacant and we recruit for those positions, those future incumbents in those positions would have their requirement?
The second question that I have, and this is directed toward Ms. Benavides, and we may need Chief Levigny to confirm this. I'm of the understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that those of us here, the mayor and the council, our addresses are of public knowledge, but for the policemen and the firemen, I don't believe that the public can obtain the addresses of where they live. Is my assumption correct?
City Manager?
I think our city attorney should speak on that.
Mr. Hager?
Yes, under state law, that information can be withheld from disclosure. It used to be that the, for not fire and police, but for other city employees, it had to be requested, but now all municipal employees, home address and personal information is exempt from disclosure.
Okay. And the other thing is, just want to be sure that this ordinance is, if approved, will only extend on the positions mentioned. It won't extend to the rank-and-file police officers and the rank-and-file firemen.
That is correct. It will not.
Okay, thank you.
May I like to move to approve? I'm sorry, let's set the light on.
I had a couple of questions, if I may, before we do that. I just see, Mr. McNabbernet, did you have a question or some other statement?
I had a statement I was gonna make, Mayor.
Okay, please do.
Instead, thank you. This is an ordinance that we're trying to put in, and I understand what the concern is because I feel that these people need to be there, but I also wanna say that these people that we currently have, as well as future people, are professional people. When we had the last thing, we had people sleeping here in cots and stuff and really taking this. So I am going to vote, I want, well, I want people to be here in Duncanville. I'd love for every city employee to be in Duncanville. That's not gonna work that way, but what I am gonna say is that we have professional people, we'll continue to hire professional people. I think this 30 minutes is a little bit, it's a little, it's not really necessary, and I think it's our city manager's job to do this versus us codifying it. Thank you. And I will vote no.
Thank you. Question for Mr. Segal. You identified that the City of Lancaster, being one of the best southwest cities, is the only other city that has this ordinance.
Correct.
Cedar Hill and DeSoto do not.
That is correct.
In your discussions, I presume you had discussions with them to even find this out. What was their reasoning for not having an ordinance in effect?
I'm not sure what their reasoning was. I don't know if they're currently working on such ordinances, but they just said that currently, it's not something that has been taken to their council.
Okay. City Manager, you have a comment, please?
Yes. This topic came up back in our weekly meeting with the best southwest city managers, and it actually evolved around the conversation of the emergency. And we are, although they don't have it by ordinance, they actually are requiring those individuals to live in their city. And so it is not an official, so we actually have no legal authority to do it, but if you look at those communities, you will find that these individuals do reside in the city in which they work. They don't have a 30-mile, they actually live in the city.
Question for you, City Manager. The administration of this ordinance would fall to your office. And if circumstances, as may be described as the traffic in the DFW metroplex can sometimes preclude arriving within that 30 minutes of a declared civil emergency, how would you, as the city manager, enforce the ordinance itself?
The enforcement is based on the perfect scenario. If I would say, we'd look at it at midnight, how long does it take to get downtown? If you had an emergency in the middle of the night, how quickly could you get to City Hall? Traffic is something that could happen if you live in Cedar Hill or in DeSoto, and it could take longer. And so what we're looking for is, as we start recruiting, I have no way, when I'm told, when I first get here, that there is a desire for people to live. This is the only tool that's legally available that I can at least ask them to live in proximity to the city. Otherwise, even though other cities are doing this, I don't have the right to do that. And some cities do pay their employees to live in the city. For example, Lancaster pays employees to live in the city and gives them additional salary, and DeSoto is actually offering financial incentives to relocate their public safety individuals to the city as well as other individuals.
So, question to, if I may, to our Chiefs of our first responders, to Chief Levigny and to Chief Rhodey. Have there been any instances in your memory, which is long-term, I mean, Chief Levigny over 25 years, Chief Rhodey as well, that when we have had a declared civil emergency, and that's a key portion of what we're looking at here, is a declared civil emergency, has there ever been a time when your, yourself or your key personnel have not been available within what would be called this reasonable 30-minute time limit? Chief Levigny, would you comment, please?
I don't know if a declaration had been made, but I would say, and this is coming off the top of my head, I don't have any empirical data on this, but we show up and we take care of business. And COVID did an amazing thing for us, although it was detrimental to many of our citizens nationwide. It showed us that we can work remotely, and technology is amazing. So I would just ask, you know, for future consideration and so that we don't limit talent acquisition, for that to be considered as well.
Okay. Chief Rhodey, do you have any input on this particular issue in terms of, okay, thank you. I see Mr. Contreras, comment, please.
Well, kinda to follow up on what you were saying, what I've witnessed in the past is, and I'll go back to Councilman Vera Cruz's statement about incidents, and I know we're talking about acts of emergency here, but the way it seems that police and fire are trained, that there are people that take over an incident or a situation that are trained to manage that, and it's not absolutely critical, and I'd like to hear from either one of the Chiefs about my observations, those, I'll call them lower-level people that are highly trained to run an incident are actually managing that incident. And the Chiefs and Assistant Chiefs are not necessarily required in those situations to be on the site because the training of the, of all of their staff is, it's amazing to watch. And so I'm not, kinda like Councilman McNabbernet in feeling that, I'm not sure that it's essential that those individuals have a time limit put on them. Although that time limit does extend out, I think it takes probably 30 minutes to get to Fort Worth, Plano, so it's a pretty wide range, but I'm still concerned that we're putting restraints on them that because of their training and the way they operate in emergency situations, that those individuals are not necessarily required to be there. So if I'm wrong about that, Chiefs, please explain how your setups are during an emergency. Thank you.
You know, I would just say, there's an evolution in the career. You're correct, and that we do have a hierarchy, and the buck stops with the chief, certainly, whether it's fire or police. But again, you know, we're getting here, we have phones, we've got technology, and we're not the ones that typically kick the door, although in some cases, if we're there, we can do that too, on our side of the building. But, yeah, I mean, you're speaking correctly, but there is an evolution, and some people are not ready to deal with some things that a chief-level person may deal with.
Mr. Cooks, and then I'll follow with some of my own comments after Mr. Cooks. Yes, please.
I'm sitting here smiling at this, not with a good smile, only because less than 30 minutes, an hour ago, we sat in the briefing room, was given this presentation, was then said, this should be a very simple presentation coming forth to the city, to the council. It was even asked, is there any concerns around the room about this ordinance that we're gonna present? The briefing room was silent, like it is right now. And I'm sure that I'm not the only one that citizens have told us or said something to us about our employees or our staff not living within the city. We can't control it all, and we're not trying to control it all. However, looking at the state ordinance, who gives us an opportunity to respond within 30 minutes, I won't ask the leaders right now who's not under this grandfather, who's under the grandfather's clause, how currently, how far they live from the city right now. They're living probably about an hour away with some good traffic. I know I drove to Rockwell, and it took me a good little piece to get back from Rockwell. You know, it won't make a difference until it's you that you're waiting on our head official to be here. It won't make a difference until it's you, until it's affected by you. But citizens have already told us, we talked about, last time there was, during the storm, we put our staff, our head staff up in hotels, the expense of hotels, two or three days, which was great. This time, we said, no, we're gonna put them in hotels, we'll put them, we'll give them cots, and we'll let them sleep here, and I can appreciate that. So thank you very much to staff. So this is nothing against our current staff. They slept in cots, but they chose to, and they have the right to, move outside the city, period. But a 30-minute time limit, it's not a bad commute. In addition to, I recall the last Chief of Police that we had, it was somewhat like the other two cities. It wasn't in writing, but it said, "We want you to live within the city." The city manager made an exception for that Chief, and now we have an opportunity to correct or to make our citizens a little comfortable with knowing that our leaders, our staff leaders are close by. But here's where it really amazes me, that we hear, and I knew it, I knew it was gonna happen, we hear one citizen's comment against it, and then all of a sudden, everybody speaks up how different it is. That amazes me. That's exactly why I think we need to hear more from citizens, because we hear one citizen speak against it, and it changed the whole room. So if you ask if I'm concerned, yes, I'm very concerned. So if you ask if I'm concerned, yes, I'm very concerned. I'm very concerned that we left out a room with, looking one way, come out here and [inaudible]. So if this vote is going like I think it's going to vote, it was going to go because we heard a citizen speak against it, I would ask then that the council would delay this vote and hear more from citizens. And if you don't hear more from the citizens, if your constituents, if our constituents tells us this is the worst thing we ever do, can never do in our lives, we'll live with it. But I'll ask this council, before you consider voting this new ordinance down, that you consider hearing more from our citizens? Because it is just totally, totally, I can't even think of the word, and I'll stop talking, but I can't even think of the word, that we sit here and have the conversation, that we walked out of a room in agreements with, we didn't vote. But now we hear one citizen that controls, that could control, I want to perceive that, that could control a majority of the vote. That's my comment.
I'm going to call on the council members in the order in which they have requested to speak. First, Mr. Koontz, then Mr. Contreras, then Mr. Mac Burnett. Mr. Koontz.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I appreciate Mark's comments, and I want to address the silence, because coming out of the room, I'd already decided I was going to vote against this, before I even came out here. And here's why, because, and I'd asked in the briefing why this was on the agenda. And I think I've heard some of the same citizen comments that Mark's talking about, and what's on the agenda doesn't address those comments, so I didn't bring that up in the briefing. And so there may be two different topics that we're discussing here, because we're talking about these employees living in the city, and I believe that's different from what's being presented here in this proposed ordinance. And so there may be a case here of not addressing the concern that's been brought to us. I don't think this ordinance addresses the concerns you're talking about. And so, but in response to your comments, we didn't take a vote in the briefing room, and there was no express consensus, we just said it would be a simple presentation. But I had already decided before we came out here that I was going to vote against this, so thank you.
Mr. Contreras.
I've not been on the council even a year yet. And while before I was on the council, and as a city employee, I'd heard people make comments like what you're referring to, Mr. Cooks. But I've not had, since I've been on the council, anybody express any deep concerns over these individual positions here being called out as living within 30 minutes of the city, or that wherever they live was a problem. So if we want to rethink this and get citizen input, I'd be open to that, but I've not had the same experiences that you and Mr. Koontz have referred to. So I wasn't sure it was an issue, to be honest with you. I think our emergency responders do a fine job, and like I said, they have a hierarchy, as a chief referred to, that take care of situations until the appropriate people get there, but it's not an absolute necessity, except maybe the public perception. And I'm not going to say that that perception isn't important, but I haven't heard it. So I would ask that, if we do anything, that we reach out and try to get citizen input, because I've heard, I haven't heard nothing at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Mac Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd have to echo what Mr. Koontz and Mr. Contreras said as well. Just because you hear one voice doesn't mean that's why the decision was made. And I will still say, this is not something that has to be specifically codified. It might be ideal, but the city manager's the one that makes the hires, and the city manager can put that under their control, and it's that simple. Thank you.
My thoughts on this, in terms of what Mr. comments are made, in terms of our lack of input during the briefing session, has no bearing on what occurs here in City Council. Because I even asked the question, is it redundant to have it done in briefing session and having done in City Council? And your response, Mr. Segal, was, we think it's important to give a briefing, but also to allow it be presented in open City Council. And at that point in time, each of us individuals here on the City Council have an opportunity to present our thoughts more in the public form, rather than the informal form of the briefing session itself. So that's a defensible position that I think is not a problem. Now, in terms of how many people have come to me personally with this particular issue, and I think I can understand what Mr. Koontz is saying, I tend to agree, and it goes to what Mr. Cooks has said as well, is that there's only one person in this city has ever come to me about a problem with this. And then to counter that with only one person coming up with some input, what we as a council, what we as individuals in the council have, is the quality of intellect. And the quality of intellect means that we can listen to reason and have the opportunity to consider that reason, whether it be a long-term or whether it be a short-term form of input. The comment that has been made, I believe, has some merit. Does it change my mind in terms of considering this ordinance? I'll not have to say. I will say that I did have some opinion about this before, as Mr. Koontz had, that I did not express while we were in City Council, or, I'm sorry, in the briefing chamber. But looking at this, and that's why I asked the question of our chiefs, do we have a problem? Are we trying to fix something that's not broken? And that becomes a problem in terms of we as a governing body, and that's where it becomes a difference between what is staff and what is council. Staff operates the city. The council governs the city. We in governance have an opportunity to enact ordinances, and those ordinances, let's redefine or let's reapply the term ordinance, it's a law. It becomes a municipal law, in effect. And the execution and enforcement of that law can be onerous. And I believe in this particular case, that's why I asked the city manager, when you prescribe a law, as it's written today, as this ordinance is written today, there does not appear to be the flexibility on the part of the city manager to exercise waiving that 30 minutes. There needs to be something that would allow the flexibility and professionalism and the qualification of looking at this and saying, hey, you know, the roads are hazardous, there's two inches of snow, and so it's covering one-half inch of ice, it's hazardous duty. But here's what really happens. We in our city, this city manager, former city manager as well, in my experience, sitting here on City Council, have never waited for a declared emergency to occur before getting on the phone and calling people in. It's always proactive done, proactively accomplished. We see something coming, we have an emergency management coordinator administrator who is in constant contact with the state weather service. I see these emails coming from the emergency management coming, TDE, I'm coming out of Austin. Our chiefs see the same emails in terms of what's happening with weather. We are given somewhere between four and five days of advance notice of hazardous conditions coming to our city. Does not then that impose upon the city manager the qualification and professionalism of that position to say, get on the phone, let's call people in? So what that does, it precludes really saying, at this particular moment in time, you've got 30 minutes to get here. Because at that moment in time, when people are called in in the face of an emergency, a possible declared emergency, the proactive movement on that part of that city manager means the 30 minutes is not even in effect. Because those particular individuals cited in this law, this ordinance, are already here. So I have some concern, I have not some, I have some deep concern over imposing an ordinance on our city manager that I would think is onerous in terms of being able to enforce it. Mr. Segal, I applaud you in terms of reaching out and responding to a request to create this ordinance, and I understand that you did that upon request. There was no impetus on your personal part to say this is something that we had to do, as I understand it. So in that respect, when we as a council consider something like this, it's important for us to, across the board, understand the implications of creating a law. Now, if there is any additional input necessary, there's a possibility of tabling this and bringing it back and letting more and more citizens have an opportunity to do that. I don't know if that's necessary. Because from what I'm hearing, there are some thoughts and minds that have already been expressed. So to table something like this in terms of bringing it back another time would only delay the process and not result in anything more expedient than what we're doing tonight. So I have some difficulty in going forward with tabling that, if somebody on council is considering doing that, I would not favor doing that. But I do have some concerns over this ordinance as it stands as written today. Those are my comments. And, you know, when we look at our city charter in terms of how we conduct ourselves as council, there is an imposition of a 10-minute timeframe, as we as City Council members have the opportunity to speak. So Mr. Cooks does wish to speak one more time, and at that point in time, then we may see a conclusion to our dialogue. Mr. Cooks, please.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the city manager, you looked at this as well, is this a reasonable, is this a reasonable request or ordinance that we're trying to put in place? To your opinion, in your opinion.
It's a council decision. The reality behind this is, all emergencies aren't planned. And in some cities, including ours, some of our employees live 100 miles away, and to think that they're going to be here in an emergency, it's not about the command, it's about being here to support their director or the city manager. And those are the individuals who I identified, who need to be in a reasonable range so that they can get to City Hall in a reasonable amount of time in an emergency. And so it's a decision that council has to make. If you are asking of my opinion...
How much can you?
I think it's a very necessary thing to do, because it's what I was told you wanted when I first got here. If it's changed now, I understand it, but I'll leave it alone.
All right.
But I don't have the right to require anybody to live in the city by state law. This is the most you have available as a tool in the city. Although it was to get people to reside in, that is not legal, and I will not allow myself to be sued for trying to insist that someone lived closer without the authority that's given by this ordinance.
And when was that state law, either from the city attorney or from the city manager? When was that state law put into place?
It's been in place for almost 20 years.
Almost 20 years. And it says 30, and it says you cannot require them to live...
I'll read it.
Yeah, please, Steve.
A municipality may not require residency within the municipal limits as a condition of employment with municipality. A municipality may require residency within the United States as a condition of employment. The prohibition under subsection A does not apply to a residency requirement for candidates for or holders of a municipal office, including the position on the governing body of the municipality, or municipal department heads appointed by the mayor or the governing body of the municipality. The governing body of a municipality may prescribe reasonable standards with respect to the time in which a municipal employee who resides outside municipal limits must respond to a civil emergency. The standards may not be imposed retroactively on any person in the employment of the municipality at the time the standards are adopted, and that is section 150.021 of the Texas Government Code.
So the reason we cannot comply with having them to live in the city, because the state laws prevent it, but I'm listening to you reading, it says, but we have an opportunity to say within 30 minutes. Is that what you just read?
Yeah.
Okay.
You have, it says reasonable response time is the key word, reasonable response time.
Yeah, we don't wait until a house catches on fire before we get a fire extinguisher. We get a fire extinguisher to make sure that we're prepared when it happens. But with that said, I'd like to make a motion that we table this and get more citizen comments.
Is there a second to the motion to table?
Second.
There's been a motion to table this and a second by Mr. Contreras. Though the motion, understand, council, is to table this. Please vote on tabling this. If you vote yes, it will be tabled. If you vote no, the motion to table will be defeated. Please vote. The motion to table is defeated. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor will make the motion to approve. I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the item that's before us, and we have, by Mr. Mac Burnett, we have a second by Mr. Vera Cruz. Please understand that the motion is to approve this. If you vote yes, you are approving what's before us. If you vote no, it is defeated. Please vote. The motion to approve is defeated. The item is rejected. Moving on to item 5B, take any necessary action as a result of the executive session.
Mayor and council, as a result of your executive session, the, excuse me, the contract for employment of the municipal manager is up for renewal, and we worked on that. You asked me to make some changes to that, and I will request the council to consider a motion to approve new contract effective upon its passage and execution for the ensuing year, and I tender the floor to council.
Before that motion is made, the city attorney has suggested that it would be worthwhile to our citizens to just, for me to identify some of the more substantive changes that have been made to the city manager's contract. The, one of the primary ones is 3.03, that the city manager would be eligible for any cost of living allowances that are afforded to the rest of the city staff, the city manager would be afforded that as well. Another one is that the city manager does have the use of a city vehicle that is owned by the city, but however, that use of that city, this is in item 3.09, that is a dedicated vehicle for the city manager's use by contract, but the city manager does have the ability to allow that to be used by any other member of the city staff pool, which is, and it says, use of said vehicle if not otherwise in use, which is to the advantage of the entire One of the other changes that was made is in 10.01, and that is the use of a standard evaluation form used by the city council in evaluating the performance of the city managers. And the standard evaluation is the one that is put forward by the International City Managers' Association. And the city council has used that also and agreed to its format without us having to craft one ourselves as city council members. Item 13.01, kind of goes back to an item we just discussed, in terms of what is residency. And residency does not require ownership of property in order to be a resident of the city. The city manager must, by charter, reside within the city limits. And so this has been augmented to ensure that the employee may rent or own residence within the city, which is in conformity with the Home Rule Charter and state law. So that is being added as 13.01, and augmented and better clarified for understanding. And that pretty well covers the major changes to the contract. The chair will entertain a motion to approve. Mr. Cooks.
I have a question for the city attorney. City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
So we just read that law, and we, is our charter going against what the law has just stated?
No.
And tell me why, please?
It says that unless hired by council, and the only position that you hire is the city attorney's position, the municipal judge's position, and the city manager's position, they're exempt from the residency requirement.
All right, thank you.
So once again, the chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Koontz, we have a second by Mr. Harvey, Mayor Protim. Please vote. Thank you. The executive session action has been unanimously approved.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Moving on to... Moving on to items six on our agenda, staff and board reports. First one is receive the monthly financial report as of January thirty first, twenty twenty two. Our manager and director of financial services, Adina Atmore. Ms. Atmore, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager. I'm here tonight to present the financial report for through the month of January two thousand and twenty two, the first month in the calendar year, but also the first month of the second quarter of the fiscal year. This is just to give you a, a brief overview of what the financial report for January entailed is that we, at this point in the year, we are thirty three percent of the budget. And so we're kind of expecting our revenues and our expenditures to be around, to receive about thirty three percent of the revenues and spent about thirty three percent of the expenditures. Our general fund budget for the revenues, we were, we are at forty nine point one percent of the budget at this time of the year. And that is mostly due to property taxes, which as you know, the due date for property taxes is January thirty first. And so a majority of citizens pay their taxes before that date. And then after that date, there are citizens that dribble in, as I will say, but also they're also going through arbitration or, you know, going to contest their, their taxes. So that's happening even as we, as we speak through the year, going through. We've had sales taxes collected. That's only, remember, that's only two months. So it's basically in comparable to what we did last year at this same time. And remember, franchise fees are done quarterly. And we've only received the first quarter of the fiscal year for franchise fees. So that's usually still in line with last year about this time. The general fund expenditures are twenty six point eight percent of the budgeted amount. And as you look at, the expenditure should be about thirty three percent at this point. So we're in line. But remember, this is just the start of the year. Employees are just getting started. A lot of the projects and contracts will start being, coming in, and then expenditures will kind of rise. Our use of fund balance projects, these are things, projects that have been approved by council. And we've only spent about seventy three hundred dollars of that thus far. And at the end of, the ending fund balance as projected for twenty two is about twelve point seven million. So if you take a look at the general fund overall, I just want you to take a look at where we are to date. I just went over some of the highlights of general fund. And we are on target at this point. So we don't see any issues with general fund as it's going on through January. This is the use of fund balances. I told you, we had only spent about seventy three hundred dollars of a two point seven million dollar budget for just one time projects that you have. And so you can see what that's made up of. But this is where we are in spending that for this time of the year. The utility fund, we have the utility operating fund, and we also have the utility CIP fund. This is just where the utility operating fund is at twenty five point two percent at this time of the year. And the revenues and expenditures, so it's a little bit under the thirty three percent as far as the revenues and expenditures. And that's something that we need to keep an eye on. The utility expenses are at twenty six, so they're a little lower than the target is. But what we're looking at is the fund balance of the utility fund. When you look at the ending fund balance, it's about eleven point five million. There does include a transfer to the CIP projects of about five million. So here's a look at the utility fund for the operating fund. If you could look at and see that the budget is, we did plan to spend about two point two million over what we actually are bringing in as far as revenue. And at this point, you'll also see transfers to other funds that total about seven point five million. And a large part of that is five million dollars to the utility CIP fund for projects. And in your, your package, I did talk about, a little bit about the utility CIP fund is that when you look at this fund, you see the expenditures we have budgeted are eight point, eight point one million for projects. So as we're going through the year, we'll have to little, look at that and see if we are really able to spend eight point one million in projects. Basically, as we're only able to transfer five million dollars from the operating fund. So we're actually spending more than we're getting into this fund. This is the economic development fund. This is going well. They have right now a four point five million dollar fund balance. And this is a fund that's managed by our economic, our development services managing director. Okay? The fieldhouse fund summary. One of the things I wanted to also point out, you know, I point out every session that this is, there's a one point, it was a one point four, now it's one point six, as we ended the year. And remember, the fund balance at beginning for fiscal year twenty two are unaudited. In essence, my audit is not complete yet. So this fund balance, the beginning fund balance is going to move until I end the audit and then I can conclude that beginning fund balance of where we actually start out for this fiscal year. And so we do have to at some point address the negative fund balance in the fieldhouse fund. All of the other funds, this is a list of all of the other funds for the city. There are the special revenue funds, which includes your hotel, your, your grants and donation funds, your TERF, TERF fund, and a lot of the police and police forfeiture funds. So these are just an overview of those funds. They all seem to be doing well. And these are the debt service. We do have one debt service fund. And we have a capital projects or replacement funds. And these are funds where we may choose a fund to put aside money in order that we replace IT equipment or fleet equipment, like heavy equipment or vehicles and that such a things. And also there are capital project funds that are involved in this, in this set of funds as well. You'll see fund number twenty six is where there's a large part of our capital projects are budgeted. Those, that entails a lot of the bond money, the bond funds that we're using for big projects. And this is just a continuation of that. And then this is, we have two other enterprise funds, what we call enterprise funds. There are the drainage fund and the sanitation, that these funds are also taking in charges through the utility bill for this time of the year. Any questions?
Just some comments more than questions. Number, chart number forty five for the EDC. The sales and other taxes are basically, well, we're somewhat ahead of where we were last year. And last year, we were in, dead in the middle of COVID. And might be out of your wheelhouse, but I know that Mr. Garcia keeps a close touch on this. And also, sales taxes are two months in arrears. Right. In terms of reporting. But there again, that's baseline two months in arrears, the four fourteen versus the four forty five. Do you, as our finance director, see any significant difference between the four fourteen and the four forty five? I mean, it's seven, you know, it's almost seventeen percent. But to you, in terms of understanding that the revenue streams from our sales taxes is out of concern? Or we just kind of note this and move on?
At this point, I don't consider it a concern. I think it's too early to be of concern about the sales tax at this point. We've only gotten two months. And remember, those are two months back. So they're really for sales for two months ago. So I think it's really too early to tell on the sales tax. When I look at comparison chart included in your package is a sales tax report that also shows prior years and for the same month. And so you can kind of see that we're still, we're still in line. There's nothing really out of the ordinary that's going on with cell tax right now. So it's too early to really tell if we're going to be over or under.
Okay. Chart number forty six, just next one. Here again, we're, we're looking at, you know, dollar totals, two sixty versus two fifty, which is really not a significant difference. I know Mr. Brassfield gave us a briefing on what he's doing in terms of understanding that. I just wanted to, to bring that to citizens' attention that we, we do watch the income revenue stream for the fieldhouse very closely. And based on the instrument, the information that Mr. Brassfield provides us, it's an aggressive program he has coming. So I, in my mind, you know, two fifty versus two sixty at this point of the year is not of deep concern to me. I think it's going to be made up as we go along. If you go to chart forty eight, please. Looking at the line, what is it? Well, I don't know what line number it is. The, the number, let's see, it's one, two, three, four, fourth line down, the three fifty, three, two seventy nine. You characterized that as TERFs.
Mm-hmm.
And the interesting thing is that when the city council established this, it was a TIF.
Yes.
Tax increment financing.
Yes.
However, I know in the parlance of both Mr. Garcia and yourself, there is, you synonymously interchange TERFs and TIF. And I once mentioned this in terms of understanding the tax increment refinancing, refinancing zone versus a tax increment financing, the TIF versus the TERFs.
There.
I once had a real problem with this because we established it as a TIF. We didn't establish it as a TERF. So I'm asking, is, in, in, in your vernacular, as a finance person, understanding, is, is there a significant difference? Maybe I need to, whoop, he's gone. Is there a significant difference between the true legal definition of a TERF versus a TIF? Because you, you two are using the terms interchangeably, and I'm not sure we should be.
Because the term is used in different regions of the United States. Sometimes, some, some regions use, the north likes to use TIF. And down here, we use a lot of TERFs. And the TERFs stands for tax increment reinvestment zone. So basically, tax increment financing, when you look at that, is, is still the same thing. All you're doing is taking the, the incremental tax difference between the base of what the property started out with and what it appreciated to, and putting it back into finance or to, for any type of improvements in the area.
Right, but it's.
So TIF and TERFs are basically the same thing. And from, this is one of the things that I have studied and tested on. It is really the same thing. It's just the terms are usually different in one region of the United States than the other. But they do mean the same thing.
I go back to my thought, and I know I'm down in the weeds. I'm subterranean. I'm not even hitting big ground level out there. I'm, I'm down below subterranean stuff.
Yes, sir.
The council established a TIF. Despite the fact in the vernacular and parlance of finance people, the TIF and TERFs are synonymous. They, they mean the same thing. When the term TERFs is used versus TIF, my feeling is you ought to be saying TIF, only because that's the way it was established. Now, city attorney, it, you know, tell me to go away, and I'm fine with going away. I'm just concerned about this interchangeability of terms when on, on true financial records and recording of this issue that we have here. Is it an issue or just tell me it's really not an issue? I'm okay.
It's really not an issue.
Okay. So you may continue to use TERFs, and I'm going to continue to think about it as TIF. And I'm good with that.
I appreciate you, Mayor.
The real difference, Mayor, is the statute that creates the zone is one is called Tax Increment Financing Act, and the other's Tax Investment Zone.
Well, there it is.
There's no difference. They're the same thing. And they operate the same.
There's statutes creating them under those two different titles.
But they're the same thing. And most finance people and bond financial advisors use TERFs because it's more common parlance in their world. But they're the exact same thing, just created under different statutes. They operate exactly the same.
I will go away.
Distinction without a difference, as Mr. Nichols used to say.
Okay. Any other, any other.
Any other questions?
Shoot me later, that's fine. That's, that's just fine.
Remind me to do that. No, I'm just kidding. I will say TIFs from, from hence on, henceforth, I will say TIF, Mayor.
You take your direction from your boss, not from me. Okay, any other comments or questions from Ms. Atmore? Oh, you were done, right?
Yes, sir, I was done.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item six B, receive the neighborhood services quarterly report, Mr. Tennant, neighborhood services manager.
Thank you, all the mayor, esteemed council.
And I think all the terms you use are okay.
Sorry?
I think all the terms you use are okay.
I try, I try.
Until you see, until we see something, I'm going to say.
That's okay. We're here to entertain and ask, ask for any questions y'all got. So basically, just want to start, we'll basically give you a little gist of what we have here in neighborhood services. We have two neigh, we have two licensed neighborhood services officers, formerly known as code officers. We have Mrs. Esther Wright, we have Mr. Terrence Bass, who also serves as a CDBG officer. I just want to make a reference to that because there will be some numbers that will be attributed to these sections that he actually surveys. Another thing that we have is Mr. Levi Chaney. He is our, our officer in training. He's actually, well, I'll get into that later, so we'll, I'm going to talk about the staff first. And our health inspector, we have Ms. Tammy Island. We have two vacancies as of March the seventh. And we're preparing for, we have six candidates to replace the two vacant positions that we have. They're pretty good, if you will. We have five that are actually certified and one that isn't. So we have a pretty good pool of candidates that we're looking at. I just kind of get you, the numbers are there. If you have any specific questions about the numbers, I'll be happy to come back to them. But just run through it in respect of your time. I just want to make sure that we basically focus on the. Oh, I got the board.
I'm, I'm sorry, you said we have, we do have, we are, we do have the five? I thought, I thought I was counting three. Go back one, one slide.
I'm sorry, sir, what was that number attributed to?
Two, services code, Esther, Terrence.
Oh, no, for the, for the interviews, we have five that are, we have five that are certified. And we have one that's not certified as a potential candidate is coming through.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah. We have two vacancies, so we basically have a pretty good pool of candidates coming in.
All right, thank you.
Just wanted to make sure, emphasize that. All right, and this right here, I know you guys can't see it behind you, and unfortunately, my projector. We'll just, we'll. Oh, you can?
Yeah, the pointer doesn't work on the screen.
Just want to emphasize the point on the, the high numbers that we do have, which are open storage. And also, we have a lot of fences repaired as well as almost on construction, excuse me, permits. Excuse me, building about permits. So those are items that we're looking at, our code officers see on a day to day basis for the most part. The other aspects, if you will, that we have as well is parking on improved surfaces and trash out early and parking on the sidewalk.
What, what do you define as unimproved surfaces?
I'm sorry?
Unimproved services, just define that for everyone, please.
Unimproved services? Parking on improved surfaces is basically parking on grass. We have people that are parking in their front yards and certain parts of the city that are basically grass. It's, it's not paved, in essence.
Okay.
Okay. And the next thing that we have is just kind of pulling out the point of illegal signage as well, which is another aspect that we have. Moving on to our community development block grant. Basically, in twenty twenty of last year, which is a contract of, two years ago, twenty twenty, our resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty six, you guys approved a resolution allow for the community develop, the community development block grant. A couple of things came out of that. One of those in particular is one of the code officers that we actually have serving for us, where seventy five percent of that salary is actually paid through this, along with reimbursable expenses such as a cell phone and tablets and clothing allowance as well. This particular neighborhood services officer actually looks into four different districts. This is districts two, three, four, and five. And it serves a total of fourteen thousand and twenty eight people.
But that, that community development block grant, is it also still for sidewalks as well?
I'm sorry?
Is it also still for sidewalks?
They do, they do enforce a sidewalk where it's that we have as well.
No, not enforcing the sidewalk, I mean pouring sidewalk.
That is under public works. And yes, they, they do have funding that's used for various items. This is just a portion, but there is a portion under public works that can be used for sidewalks. And looking at Jackie, yes, they do.
That is accurate. I was just focusing on neighborhood services aspect of it. I apologize for leaving.
No, that's, all right, when I saw block grant, it brings it up.
Yes, sir. And this is just a map to illustrate the green highlighted and the red. The green is residential and the red is commercial, the areas where our CDBG neighborhood services officer patrols. And development block grant, just want to basically go over the slide where the totals are. There's a lot of the open storage, which we primarily have, and as well as some parking on the sidewalks, as mentioned earlier. We have a few of those, not a lot in that particular areas. Health inspections under our health inspector, a total of one hundred and fifty five. This deals with restaurants, retail. Our retail consists of grocery stores within the city. And if you notice, the schools as well, all the schools, elementary, middle, and also high school. And the mosquitoes and pools, you notice that those are blank. That's because we're in the winter months. As soon as the summer comes. in the winter months, as soon as the summer comes, the summer months comes, excuse me, the spring and summer, that's when you're going to have a little bit more of the numbers because of all the mosquito issues that come around that time, and because of the weather change.
I have a question, Mr. Tennant.
Yes, sir.
Do, does our health inspector have authority over public gymnasiums?
Public gymnas-
Fitness centers? Public fitness centers in which people pay a fee to, to have membership?
Over the pool and the spas, yes, sir.
And over no other activity within it, no restrooms or the-
The pool, spa and the restrooms, excuse me, that, because the spa is fixed to restroom, so that is accurate, yes.
Oh, it does include, okay, so spa, so our health inspector has authority over the restrooms and the spa and the pool, but not over any of the equipment and sanitation of the equipment?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir.
Just looking at the, for February, the total number of citations adds fifteen, but it doesn't have, doesn't identify which restaurants, retail, schools.
That might be, that's a typo, because our health inspector is not, that's a typo, I apologize for that.
Was that a zero, or is it fifteen?
It's a fifteen, you're, you're right, your eyes are not tricking you, that's a typo on my part.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So do, do we know wh- where those citations fall here?
Hmm.
Do we know where the citations came from?
No, I'm saying the fifteen is, is a typo.
Okay, so it should be zero?
Yes, it should be zero.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you for that catch right there, sir.
Mr. Contreras.
Do you, could you go back to that previous, yes?
Sure.
Do you track restaurant or, or store closures?
No, we do not track restaurant and store closures, meaning that if they close, we're not aware of it until-
No, I'm, I'm talking about if you, if you close them for health violations.
Health violations. We do, we have not tracked it on this report, no, sir.
Okay. Do you report in any way for the public to know restaurant scores?
That's a good question, I do not think we do, sir, no.
Okay. That's something I, I just, as a comment, I, I think that we should entertain that idea, because the public has, I think they have the right to, to access that information, it's important for them when they-
Actually, Mr. Contreras, I apologize, I gave you misinformation in regard. We actually have that information located on our website.
Mr. Alex?
Yes.
Did you want to respond to that?
Yes.
Hi, thank you. Yes, I'm given a list, an updated list, and I post that to the website.
Okay.
So it is out there.
Yeah, and I, I understand that-
It's a new transition, so I was-
Yeah, you've got, you've got a lot to figure out what's happening, but now you know.
Yes, now I know, and now we all do.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good public service, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alex.
Mr. Harvey?
I, I was just going to say real quickly, last year, my wife and I took a trip to Seattle, and, and we noticed as we were going through the downtown area that the restaurants actually had posted by letter grades how they were rated with the health department, so.
Okay. Something to consider right there, thank you.
Well, that's what we mentioned, that's what we mentioned earlier when we talked about the food trucks, making sure they posted on the food truck, and I think, when we talked about that, they couldn't do it for the restaurants at all yet, or we hadn't decided to do it as a council.
Good, continue, please.
Thank you. All right, Jessica, and, and just to sum everything up, we have a couple more slides left. Basically, we want to talk about the Neighborhood Vitality Commission. This is one of the commissions that the, that Neighborhood Services is a liaison to. Basically, their goal is to educate and empower Dockville citizens on the civic responsibilities required to maintain their own values. It consists of seven members, meets every fourth Wednesday of the month at six-thirty. One of the big programs that they help with is the PIP, carried on by First Methodist Church. This year, we've received eight applications. Looks like there might be about five that are moving forward as of today's meeting, and of course, this is going to be held on the last weekend of April and the first weekend of May.
When's the last, when's the last time you-
Had a meeting? Uh, which one, Neighborhood Vitality Commission?
Yes.
We just had one a couple weeks ago.
And we had a call?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes. All right, the quarter accomplishments, these are accomplishments that have occurred in the past quarter. We've successfully moved over to one-on-three Wheatland. We've created body worn camera policy, which any entity that, that wears body cameras has to have a policy before they actually implement it. Thanks to this body right here, resolution was passed a couple months ago to allow for the, moving forward to get those cameras for our neighborhood services officers. Another thing that occurred was that we received a code enforcement two training. This was beneficial, and of course, that long conversation we had about the citations, which you guys, of course, also approved as well. And also, we have one officer in training that's preparing to take his code next quarter, and this transitions to us to the future endeavors, because it's not just about what we did last quarter, it's about identifying what we're proposing to do next and moving forward in that regard. We're looking to transition and building permits, inspections to function under the department operations. We're looking forward to purchasing body armor, which is another entity that this council and also administration wants to move forward on. Also, one of the aspects of neighborhood, of NBC, is that they're looking to attend two board and commission meetings, so that way they can help inform and educate themselves on all the other boards, so that way we can actually see how to work with other commissions and, and boards to follow together, so that way we can actually have a game plan moving forward as we try to create some of these other things that you see, such as neighborhood organizations throughout the city, so that way we can not just look at a code, I mean, at the code aspect through individual lens, look at it through a communal lens, so that way we can help inform the educational components to basically provide that education to the citizens. And also, in that process, identify neighborhood leaders, so that way we can have that quote-unquote trickle-down aspect, where you find that neighborhood entity that can basically help educate the community, so that way it's more of a dual process as opposed to a singular process. The other aspect is interdepartmental collaborations. We're looking at, looking at a community tool shed, i.e., if you don't, if you can't take care of your property, this is something, an establishment that other municipalities have done, where you can actually provide the tools that they need, so that way they can do it, as opposed to just saying that you basically have a violation, how about we help you, so that way you can correct said violations? That's one of the aspects that we're going for. The other aspect is see, click, fix, where we can actually not just have a singular communication with the public, but a, a quote-unquote, a back-and-forth communication, where they can, they can see the status of their comple, of the citizen complaints, so that way it's not the whole, you submitted a complaint, it's in limbo, now what is the status of it? This is a tool right here that could actually be able to be a push-pull, where they can actually know where their status is, so that way everybody's on the same page, and you guys don't have to worry about the follow-up information, it's more of a like, hey, click on the, on this, on the website, and everybody's actually educated and aware. That's all I have to report at this time. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
I would have a comment, Mr. Tennant. I have had an opportunity to personally observe you and your interface with our citizens, and I want to commend you in the manner in which you do so, because it is less than enforcement type of attitude that you take with more of a, please help us out in fixing things kind of an attitude.
Thank you, sir.
The communication between you, our, our enforcement officers, and our citizens, I believe, is greatly improved, and our citizens are more able to respond to a request to fix things rather than something that is so, you know, rudimentary, you know, you've got to do something here. So under your leadership, I've seen that change in terms of that communication. I commend the city manager for assisting in that, and commend you and your entire staff for making a better communication interaction with our citizens. Thank you.
May I just-
Yes, Mr. Coons.
Well, so, yeah, so first of all, just to echo what the mayor just said, I, I've heard absolutely nothing but positive feedback as far as your, your interaction with, with residents, and so I appreciate, you, you, you bring in your, your character and your, as well as your talents, but just your ability to interact with people and, on a personal level, I just, just heard nothing but good things about you, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And then, a couple of months ago, there was, I think there was some discussion about having a neighborhood services officer assigned to each district, are we any closer to that?
Yes, we're very close to that. Unfortunately, right now, we have a few vacancies, but we do have a template drawn up, and we'll be providing it to you for the next quarter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
But before, before you say anything, sir, I just want to say one thing, I thank you all for your accolades, but I'm not the individual that people see out there in the streets, it's my code officers, so please, I thank you for giving me the acknowledgement, but they're the ones that everybody sees, so I also like to say thank you to them as well. All right.
But it's, it's, Mr. Tennant, Mr. Tennant, you know, it's tops down. It's tops down.
And, and people are, I've heard your name specifically, that's why I'm, I have to praise you.
Probably was your name, right?
Yeah, no. Let me, Tennant, yeah.
All right, thank you.
If I could, without naming an address, I gave you all a very complex property that I dealt back, back in my day.
Yeah.
It was very challenging, we, we couldn't get full compliance, it was beyond the scope of reasonably working with these people. And when I turned that over to Mr. Keys and, and Ms. Benavides, y'all took care of it. And I didn't go and check on it, and I didn't know, and at a function, city function, a lady walked up and gave me the biggest hug, and I didn't mind, but she said, "Thank you", and I said, "Okay, what'd I do?" And that was it. She had been watching that property for years, and when I drove by it the next day, it was remarkable. I, I don't know how y'all did it, because this was not a person that ever cooperated and, and could be the reason you have body armor, and, but anyways, that's all I want to say is, thank you all, thanks for, for your staff doing whatever they did to turn that one around, that was a real proof-
Thank you, sir.
-that y'all are being effective, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our business for tonight. Our meeting is adjourned, timestamp is eight fifty-six. Thank you.